Good evening, welcome to the January, or October 17th meeting of the Barrington Select Board. Roll call.
Capello here.
Gibson here.
Slocia here.
Bailey here.
And Shrek here. Ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you. Someone had a chance to look over the agenda for today?
I don't see anything going on here but a hat rack, coat rack.
I'm not fast on that, sorry.
I do have one thing, Mr. Chair, for the board's consideration under agenda review. So we received an application today for the Energy Committee, and the applicant requested that the Select Board consider it tonight. We told them that it was a two-part process regardless that appointments wouldn't be made tonight, but we made copies of the application if you're interested, and if you were interested in adding it to the agenda, you could add it under Appointments for Discussion, or if not, obviously, we meet almost weekly, so we could add it to the agenda for the meeting on the 24th and for a potential appointment on what would be the 7th of November. Is that enough?
Mr. Chair.
Here, Captain, one more.
Yeah, we haven't given it.
Oh. There we go. What do you?
We didn't give it back.
We're good.
All right. Mr. Slocia, will we add this to the agenda? Second? That's second. All those in paper, and then... No?
No.
All right. I think it's page two, Carrie's answer. That would be added to the agenda. Okay, now, we have a new, excuse me, motion to approve the amended agenda. Make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
What's in favor? That's unanimous. All right. Time for public comment. Let me, before we begin this, let me read the rules that we have, just to make sure everyone understands the rules of public comment, and I'll just selectively do it. When a person addresses the Select Board, it should be to the Select Board, not individual members, when they are addressing and permitted to speak by the Chair, speakers first need to recite their name and address for the record. Visitors should address their comments to the Chair and the Select Board as a body, not to any individual member. Each speaker should be provided a single opportunity for comment, limited to three minutes. Visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the Select Board may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between speakers. Select Board and/or the Town Administrator Chair will preserve strict order and decorum at all Select Board meetings. All right. Anyone here prepared to speak? Sure, please.
Paul Moss Teller, 83 Washington Street. Prior to this board and Town Administrator, 2014, 15, 16, the town's website has been taken down a number of times, computers have been taken down a number of times. I have some tools. We have 33 live email hyperlinks on the town website. I'm going to strongly suggest you take those emails off the town website. We're just sitting ducks for ransomware. Second question, here again, comment, wondering about the town server, is it in a sealed room with a Halon suppression system? We can take that offline, discuss that at a later time. I know you have an Energy Committee swearing in. I have agenda, something that you could add to them is, back in 2015, 16, I don't want to put Doug Langdon on the spot, but we went with a third-party electric supplier for the town. We saved the town roughly $7,000, $7,500. I have a list here of 28 suppliers for municipalities, maybe we look into that to save the town a little bit of money.
That's about it? Thank you, sir. May I speak there?
Please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone? Mr. Russell?
Okay, Robert Russell, 99, 101, speaking about tomorrow's special town election slash meeting. Tomorrow's vote is important. For those who think the county attorney did do an investigation, he did not. I requested through 91A his investigation notes, reports, interviews with witnesses, and I was surprised despite my great respect for County Attorney Tom Vilar, there are none. He simply looked over my report, he did no follow-up and no interviews, and determined based upon it, there did not appear to be any criminal activity. Interviews and follow-up are the hallmark of a thorough investigation. After I presented my material to the Board of Selectmen, they ruled that Connor acted appropriately, but no investigation was done, no report, no paper trail, this reeks of a cover-up. Remember, Connor received two letters from a neighbor of mine claiming we were recklessly firing machine guns in my backyard in such a way that it was endangering the lives of this person's two young children. We are talking about gun violence against children, and the Board of Selectmen determined that he was acting appropriately. This is dereliction of duty. Imagine if a police officer or a school employee received a similar letter, they would lose their jobs. So if Connor gets another letter saying that somebody is firing machine guns recklessly in their backyard, and that this is endangering the lives of children, I would expect the Board of Selectmen to also say he would be acting appropriately by not reporting this to the police. Apparently, that is their standard here in Barrington. But he did act. He added the letter to the town, gave the letter to the town attorney, and it was sworn in as an exhibit, as part of the lawsuit against my business, and was also added to the zoning board. Those letters are still on the town website, and anybody could access them and wonder, are we recklessly endangering children in my neighborhood? Just because it doesn't fit the criminal code, and I'm almost done, doesn't mean it's not unethical, unjust, or corrupt. Let's send a message that we don't stand for this kind of behavior in Barrington and vote no at tomorrow's special town meeting. Connor, you didn't do your job. We know why you didn't report to the police, and you had dereliction of duty. See you in March. I'm done. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
Hey, guys. All right. Jim Slocia, 21 James Henry Drive. For those that don't know, was on vacation last week, and I just had concerns for the townspeople on how they conduct themselves in the meetings for Select Board, School Board, any board at that. I would like to urge anyone, and I mean anyone, that comes into a Select Board meeting, School Board meeting, et cetera, that if you're going to play on words and inaccurately quote people, especially when it's been broadcasted, and they are not there to defend themselves, that's bad for any town, any board, anywhere. Demanding demeanors and expectations that the whole town will revolve around you as an individual is also wrong. There is a process to how the town works, and that process has also been examined by the county's attorney and the AG, who think we are doing a great job. Everyone works together in this town, and they do their best every day, their best foot forward. I truly believe that, and to make the citizens of this town happy and healthy.
Do you believe Connor acted appropriately?
Mr. Russell?
Is that what you believe?
Mr. Russell?
Is that what you believe? Why don't you look me in the face when you say this?
Mr. Russell? Mr. Russell?
Jim, if you're going to say this, why don't you look me in the face?
Because you don't deserve me to look you in the face.
Okay. Mr. Russell, you're not supposed to be speaking at this point. I thank you to not interrupt again.
Have me arrested, Danny.
I'm going to have you arrested.
If that's what you would like.
Don't cry wolf unless you want to.
He doesn't have the balls to look me in the eyes.
So we're approaching on disorderly conduct. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments, public comments?
If you're participating virtually and you'd like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand. If you're on a telephone, you might have to press star six to unmute yourself, speak up, wait to be recognized by the Chair. Be another opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting. I don't see anything virtually, Mr. Chair.
All right, yes.
Could I speak from here?
You can.
I would like, my public comment is, I would like for everybody to know that I had a conversation with Chair, and I requested the Chair eliminate public comment from our agenda. And the reason for it is it's not required by law. There's only two Select Boards that allow this, and I didn't bring my notes with me, so I can't say that out loud. But what I was told was that the Chair said, no, he did not want to go along with my thinking, he wanted everybody to have the opportunity to do this. And the reason I say this now is that the Chair is the one that prepares the agenda along with Town Administrator, so that's how I feel, that's how I feel about public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? None online, none by telephone? All right, we'll close the public comment session. Public hearing, anyone from the School Board here? I don't see any.
I received word from Ms. Neal today, and she wasn't, she didn't have anything to report and wasn't able to make the meeting, but she hopes to make the next one. They have their budget kickoff tomorrow night.
Right, and they have summer in court.
Okay, great.
Okay. Issuers of a building permit on Long Shore Drive, a private road for ZOR project development, map 108, lot 64.
As indicated in your packet, this is an application consistent, it's a category three application, and it meets the policy, option two of section four, a road improvement, which is really the meat and potatoes of the policy itself. So they have submitted a proposal to invest $11,500 into Long Shore Drive, which represents 10% of their proposed construction costs, is reviewed by department heads and the planning board, and all have supported the proposal as submitted because it meets the policy as written.
Mr. Baylor?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the issuance of the permit, map 103, lot 64, as proposed.
I'll second that.
Is there any public comment on this particular issue? I see nothing.
And if you're participating virtually, you can press star six to unmute yourself or raise your hand using the Teams feature. I see nothing, Mr. Chair.
In that case, all those in favor of the motion to issue a building permit for map 103, lot 64? Aye. Aye. You know this?
Great, thank you.
The Police Department was able to secure a $16,000-plus grant from the Office of Highway Safety. It's an unanticipated fund, so in accordance with RSA 31:95-B, public hearing has been published, and is open for public comment. Initially, questions from the Board?
Kevin, I just want to say thank you to the staff and the chief for making this possible.
And it is a public hearing because it's over $10,000, consistent with RSA...
31.
Yeah, one of those.
31:95-B.
Thank you. So we open and close public comment, consistent with public hearing.
Right. Anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this? Sir?
Paul Moss Teller. The allocated amount, is that going toward the Road Association?
We're on a different public hearing now.
Okay, sorry, Ross.
But that is being supervised by the Road Association.
The money, there's no exchange of cash. Yep, it's work, it's a scope and fee of work.
We're discussing the public, I'm guessing straight, the...
Acceptance of Office of Highway Safety grant funds in the amount of $16,324.
There it is. Is there any, yes, Mr. Baylor?
Make a motion to accept it.
Okay, let's see if there's any other public comment either online or by telephone?
I don't see any, Mr. Chair.
I don't see nothing. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Baylor.
Make a motion to accept and expend the Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of $16,324.
Second. Mr. Gibson, seconds. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Invited guests, Chief Joy, who'd like to make the presentation of the budget, my budget, proposals for the year.
As Chief Joy gets set up, I'll just let the board know what you have in your packet. So the first, the next item is your Advisory Budget Committee meeting minutes from the meeting that the Police Department discussed. The chief, and Deputy Chief did attend, which worked very well, encourage other department heads to follow suit. The next item that you have is the feasibility study, the final feasibility study from CMA for the renovation addition project at the Public Safety Building. The next documents, which I have to, I really have to give good thanks to the Police Department for the work in this next set of documents, which is their equipment replacement schedule. So they have taken and not only provided a narrative, but also an item-by-item Excel spreadsheet of replacement for all of their equipment. And the value of documents like these extends beyond these rooms in the Police Department, but this is what we show the community when we go and ask, you know, $25,000 a year, it's 11 this year, but when we ask for contributions to the Police Equipment Capital Reserve, we can point to these documents and they can see exactly where every dollar and cent is going. There was a lot of work to create this document, it will be work to keep it up to date, but time well spent and a really productive document for the town. So those are the budget-related documents. One other quick note on the budget binder, you have, the documents that have holes punched in them in your packet have a place in your budget binder, so you can put those away. There's some other documents that get updated through the process that don't all make it into a, you know, Select Board meeting packet. I keep copies of all of those in the administrative office, so on a, you know, semi-regular basis, feel free to stop through, even if it's before Select Board meetings, and update your binder if you're interested. Of course, all the documents are up to date on the budget website, barrington.nh.gov/2023budget, but if you want to keep an up-to-date printed version, that's how to do that. Ready, Chief?
You're leaving.
All right, one second, I'll get you on camera. Yeah, well, listen.
I'm just going to move it out of camera.
There's still tracking.
You're wearing one, don't leave.
I am. Wasn't quite sure if it was going to be necessary or not. So for those of you who sat on the board before, you've seen this, I'm not recreating the wheel, this is the same PowerPoint presentation that we've used since I was chief, and I think I stole it.
I don't change the graphics.
Nope, didn't change a single thing except numbers, so you're in for a long, boring PowerPoint, because I am not creative where this stuff comes in. So the overall, why is that? I didn't do that.
No, I'm just making it bigger for everybody. How's that?
So our overall increase, $133,408, as you would expect, the bulk of that is wages and benefits, obviously. You'll see that as we go on, but just to give everybody the heads up upfront, there's 22 figures and there's 23 figures. It is what it is. First line item, salary line, that is Deputy Chief and I, $173,930, that is up at this point, that is subject to change based on decisions made by you folks regarding the wage survey, steps, COLA, et cetera. Full-time hour line, again, by 39,607, that does include the shift diff. Several years ago, we had a separate line item for shift differential, that was included in this line item three or four years back now. I continue to know that, I don't know why, probably nobody remembers it was there except for me at this point. At this point, our full-time staffing level authorized is three sergeants, two patrol, one of detectives, and seven full-time officers. We are still well below staffing levels, but we are not requesting an additional officer this year. Sorry, Steve, we're still not going to do it. We brought it to your attention, we know what the plan is, this wasn't the year for it. With the increases coming down the road, with everything, cruisers, materials, ammunition, and everything else, this wasn't the year for multiple departments in public safety desk, so we're not going to. But we are going to remind you that it needs to be done. If I can get it up here. The staffing summary, we have 12-ish officers. I say 12-ish because one of my car climbers isn't what I consider a true .5, you've seen me throw .5s around in the past. Officer Young is a .5, he works 30 hours a week. Officer Turner is not a .5, Officer Turner works about a shift a week, a little extra here, a little less there, based on his full-time job. So it's hard for me to say I have two full .5s. I'm also still missing my Officer Saroski, so I say 12-ish because I'm not staffed even where I think I'm staffed. DOJ average, we should be sitting on 21.91, let's call it 22 officers. The DOJ average for New Hampshire, I should be sitting on 26, rounded down. Karsee School, 15.85. Because that's the one that matters. The by-tell formula tells us we should have 16.34. Now, I did not redo the numbers for this year. Quite frankly, I'm not asking for another person, I'm not going to sit at my desk and run the numbers. Doing these staffing levels is a lot of work, there's a lot involved in it, we haven't changed enough from last year that I'm still comfortable with using that number. Pirate time hours, 58, 243, that covers my two part-timers. Officer Young was at the top pay scale priorities, not anymore. It also incorporates funds for approved per diem positions as we go forward. Again, I'm not looking to hire right now, if the correct part-time applicant came along, I would certainly grab that individual. OT, 62,500, that's up a little bit from last year, we were at $60,000. The reasons for overtime is the same that they've always been. The uptick is based on the upcoming training requirements from the LEACT and from PSDC. We're going up significantly in the next two years from eight to capping out at 24 hours of training mandatory. So again, that's minimums. I do not do minimum training, I never have, I never will. I make sure our officers get the training that they need in the areas, that they need training. The minimums don't bother me, but we still need to cover those shifts when they're away. A lot of the schools that some of our officers are going to, specifically our supervisors, are week-long schools, so those entail overtime as well. Witness fees, this is a level-funded line, $2,000. This is used to compensate officers to attend court and administrative hearings. Apparently, I missed a space there. Prosecutor Reed's doing a great job not bringing officers into court, a lot of plea negotiations, a lot of guilty pleas, so we don't have to bring our guys, guys and girls into court, making them lose sleep in their own time. Holiday pay, again, this just accounts for the fact that public safety works holidays. They don't have the time off that Deputy Chief and myself have, and this is per bargaining agreement, 17,2. Earned time buyout, again, we level fund this at 18,5, it scares me a little bit every year. Our three-year average is 19,099, it's a little bit high, but we can generally account for some leftover to make up for it. Highway safety, we just went over this, so I'm level funding this as well, 32,15. Obviously, the amount that we're getting back from, getting from highway safety this year is significantly higher than it ever has been, and we have a quarter match. This doesn't come near our quarter match, however, we were just audited again this year, they do every year. We passed the flying colors. I have always met our match with payroll. So we work four-hour blocks, three to them, one to us. I talked to the gentleman from Highway Safety this year, because we have a set fee for the use of our vehicles, for details, for outside details, $17 an hour, we can utilize that for match purposes. Because that's what we charge outside vendors to use our vehicles, the feds accept that as match. So I'm using this to be safe, my anticipation is that we're not going to have to scratch this nearly as much as we did. The only guy that will not meet that $17 an hour quarter match is me on my shift. If I work a DWI grant, that $17 an hour won't match me, it matches every other person that we have working for us. But I also have admin that I need to do to getting everything ready, so. Benefits, again, this one's up 61,938. It is what it is, there's not much I can do about that. Changes in staff, changes in what folks take, that we're not going to talk about because we're scared of HIPAA violations and everything else. Prosecution, this is up $2,500. This contract has already gone in front of the Board and was approved. I cannot speak highly enough about Attorney Reed, she's doing a fantastic job, she's spending a lot more time in court now. COVID, I hate to go back to COVID because it sounds like an excuse, it killed the court system. We're still trying to recover from the backlog of cases, and that means Attorney Reed is in court a lot getting things done. She was there today, Monday's not normally a day for her, but she had trials in the morning, she had trials in the afternoon for all of us, so thank you for approving that. Police contracts, this is up a little bit, the 26, 250. Stratford County Dispatch is up slightly, actually, I'm sorry, Stratford County Dispatch is static as it stands now. I figured a 5% increase to account for anything mid-year that comes up, it's static. IMC, which is our Police Department Computer Program, my database, has gone up slightly this year. WB Mason is up, if you look at last year's numbers, significantly. That state bid price, that's unfortunately allegedly a COVID issue. Full Memorial, formerly Kuchiko Valley Domain Society, is the same, that's static. GPS monitoring, static. SWAT team, SCRO2, S-C-R-T-O-U, I like SWAT because everybody knows what it is, is static at 1,500. There is an increase coming next year. Next year, there's a $500 increase coming, we're good for this year, we're just going to have to deal with that later. Alarm's 270, in all candor, we're looking at moving away from the current alarm company. We're not really seeing the service that we want, we're trying to consolidate basically what the town is doing as well. And again, lines used to pay for maintenance agreements, contract costs, et cetera, some have increased, some I'm worried about increasing in a year. Equipment vehicle maintenance, so we're going to leave this alone at 17,5. This, we need some explaining, because it bothers me every year. The true expenditures in this line right now is well above $22,000. It doesn't show that way, because when we work details, that $17 an hour comes into play, and that gets deposited in this line. We funded 17,5, we spent over 22,5. The fear comes is if the details dry out, if Eversource isn't working, if there's not a big road project somewhere. This year, we worked a lot in Lee, quite frankly, we had a lot in town, but we were also down at the traffic circle quite a bit, too. We budget 17,5, if we don't work at all, this is going to be a problem. Everything's gone up, and I'm not telling you folks anything you don't know, because y'all have to buy tires for your cars, too. I just have to buy eight times as many. Off equipment and maintenance is a holding line. This used to be CCO's computers, eliminated from Rockport. Someday, we'll probably get rid of that line item, but that is not. Copyer leasing supplies, three thousand, that's the same. The five-year contract, seventeen twenty-four. Tech agreements, two hundred dollars, contract base rates, three ninety-five. All that comes to twenty-three nineteen. Paper's gone up, as I'm sure folks know, so I'm asking to go at three thousand dollars just to make sure we can cover paper and whatnot. Request for report seems to have come as well. Communications line, fifteen seven fifty. Verizon, you see a decent little increase here, seventy-six eighty. This year, we're okay with that because we're using the grant money that Deputy Chief and Detective Sergeant Barra got, but that's for the fifteen laptops now, the detective cellphone. AT&amp;T is three sixty-two, consolidated now to purse lights, sixty-six nineteen. All that's fifteen five sixty-four, so a little bit of a pat there. Print-in, two fifty, no change there, that's just business cards associated. This one, it burns me to level it, but I'm going to do it anyway. Again, I understand the increase is townwide, so I'm going to leave it alone. Conferences training, ten thousand dollars. We are not already buried on that line this year, I'm right there at ten K. Like I said, I want to make sure that our folks are trained. That's as a result of having a young department and young-ish supervisors. I still need to make sure that those supervisors are getting correct supervisory schools. Those are not offered that much through PSDC anymore, though that's changing a little. Those are pay-to-play schools, as are a lot of the others that we go to. Use the fees, eight hundred dollars, that's also level funded. That's not just use the fees, it's also periodicals, et cetera. The National Association of Chiefs of Police, CARE, USPCA, LEAP. Mileage expenses, again, no change in that line, it's four hundred dollars. Historically, we've been okay there. Postage, two thousand dollars. We're going to be tighter under there again because of the dogs primarily. Supplies, this is consumables, tasers, ammunition, operating equipment, anything office-related. In twenty eighteen, we consolidated this line with the office supply line. I would prefer that we have some things broken out so that it was offices and then ammunition, so that it was a little bit better, but that's not the way we've done it. This is an increase in two thousand dollars, uniforms and protective gear. There's a couple explanations for that. One, the uniforms have gone up about twenty percent this year, if my memory serves, pants and shirts alone. And pants wear out, pants get ripped. Unfortunately, folks like to fight the police. We fight the police, we rip things, tear things, get blood on things, and then just no wear and tear. The other big issue is the BVP grant, the ballistic vest program. The feds aren't covering nearly as much as they used to. So if we're not getting the help from the feds, we have to absorb that locally. We obviously cannot and will not ask our staff to work without ballistic vests. Here's the other hit, going up two thousand here. In my summary, you'll see some different wording. In my summary, which I submitted before, I actually noted that we were going to be paying more for a cruiser this year. That is no longer the case. I was able to do some digging, I have found a cruiser at this year's price, sitting on the lot. It's going to cost me seven hundred and fifty extra dollars, I believe, to have them hold that car for me until January, but I found one at this year's price. It matches what we have, it's a trackable great Ford Explorer, so I'm going to be able to get it at this year's price. It's going up about twenty percent next year. So we need to prepare for that, we can go up incrementally. And quite frankly, I'm going to need the extra two thousand dollars to outfit the cruiser this year because everything that goes inside our cars has gone up as well. The partitions and everything. Again, just a little cruiser history because I know it's going to get asked for eventually, so I might as well throw it up here while I'm doing it.
And these are all in your spreadsheet, also the spreadsheet that the police department just finished. And with notes in that spreadsheet, so you see that if some cruisers are, have a longer replacement schedule, like one would be the K-9 Cruiser, because that's dedicated to one user. It generally experiences less wear and tear, the mileage is kept down a little bit more, and so that's a little longer on the replacement schedule.
I'd also like to note that I believe my summary submitted prior had us replacing a twenty-seventeen Ford Taurus, if I'm not mistaken. That is no longer going to happen. The twenty-seventeen Dodge Charger that we have, you meant four? The engine's been knocking, that is a terminal problem. We are going to be replacing that car instead of the Taurus. Quite frankly, there's nothing that can go wrong with a Taurus, it's going to cost us more than replacing the engine in that Charger. So the Charger's going down the road hopefully before the engine, because I want to be able to drive it down to the auction house. Equipment. Fire chief's back, they make comments about driving. This is computers, hardware, everything. This also includes the ongoing cost of our body-warn cameras. In a couple years, folks as a board will have to decide if we're going to continue that program or not. Forty-eight, ten contingency, it's just a placeholder. Police clerical is a Perry's line that accounts for one for the hour-look administrative assistant. And the K-9 line, up a little bit to three thousand dollars. Twenty-five hundred dollars is not enough to run a K-9 program. Three thousand dollars is not enough to run a K-9 program, but we'll do it on that. Everything's gone up in the K-9 road, too. Dog food's gone up, leashes have gone up, tracking harnesses have gone up, everything's gone up, so. Like an extra five hundred dollars in that line, I'd like a lot more, but I'm only going to ask if I want to. And that's the budget presentation. I'm not going to belabor it, we've been here and done this. I'd like to spend time on questions if you'd rather ask questions. I'm going to have Ms. Lawson change it over to the next one. Are we going right into that one, sir?
Um, we'll do questions and comments on the budget. They're going to do the more article building presentation next, and maybe we'll let the budget committee opine about the budget if they also, if they want to, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I think we can do that because this is going to be pertinent to how we look at the budget. Not directly at this year's budget, but points us in the direction that we may need to address.
Okay, yeah, we'll start with the budget.
No, let's do this.
Oh, before.
Let's do this presentation because it's going to inform some of the way we think about the budget. Not that it impacts the budget directly this year, but it will, I think, inform us a little bit on where we're going.
Understood.
Sorry, Chief.
Ready for primetime? You can go to the desk or the podium.
We're going to the desk if she's coming up.
I can do the desk. Bring a chair.
So it's Chief Walker and I sitting here, and I'm going to be very, very honest. Deputy Chief has been.
Oh, wait.
What?
No, I'm confused. I think you said you wanted him to make the presentation and then do questions on the budget?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, yeah, yeah. So you're good with the presentation, you see it and up present.
Yeah, I think it informs.
I'm with you now, I just, I have the camera, the people at home can see you, but your presentation's just going to be up here.
Yeah, then we'll, because.
So this is just the down and dirty, quick version of the Rhino project. I told the TA, the fire chief and I agree, I wasn't going to pour my heart and soul into it until I get support for it. We're both extremely busy, I'm willing to donate time, but I'm not willing to kill myself or something that's going to die on the vine right now, so here we go. The objective of the presentation is to provide a comprehensive plan to complete a renovation project that meets the physical and operational needs of the public safety building for the next two decades-ish. Gain the support of the advisory budget committee and the select board in order to continue the project, prepare a warrant representative to the board in March of twenty twenty-three. Actually, did you see I put floorboards and stuff, I changed the, I did change this one.
Look at you.
See? You can teach it without new tricks. The justification for the project, the current public safety building barely meets the current staffing levels. The fire department's recently been approved for twenty-four armor staffing and will be approved, if all goes well, for another full-timer. The PD has added one full-time and one part-time position since the prior renovation. The twenty-eighteen renovation dealt rectifying immediate critical needs based on gender and handling of prisoners and juveniles. At that time, the board requested a further plan to address future needs, now with the PD side. Current plan addresses needing changes to the facility as a whole and potential community use of a training. Public Safety Building was constructed in nineteen ninety-nine, consolidated the fire department EMS and PD under one roof, which we were not at that point in time. Twenty-eighteen renovation was limited to the police side, but it did cut off the access between the police and police sides. Twenty-twenty-one, the police department interim completed a needs-based report that you presented to TA Mackiver, which was done. And in twenty-twenty-two, the public safety complex feasibility study was completed. Quick facts, we want to keep the public safety in the same location, under the same roof. That's very important to Chief Walker and I. Current town-owned properties did not really meet the needs of both departments. It's no cost to purchase new land because we're working where we are. Minimal intrusion into daily operations, as minimal as that can be. School bond just expired, and there are no other infrastructure projects proposed at this time. That is your current public safety building, but it's idyllic snowbanks and my leaking roof. Current public safety building, the fire department is comprised of the fire department dispatch, personnel offices, kitchen, training room apparatus bay, two ambulances, two fire tech, arrest force, gear store, mechanical, shared space bunk rooms, exercise room, and common room, if I miss anything. PD entry administrative area, personnel offices, evidence storage, such that it is male and female bathroom slash locker rooms, meeting slash interview slash interrogation room, yes, it is all one spot, booking room, Sally Court, undersized, and an IT closet. Staffing levels, PD, one chief, one deputy chief, two patrol supervisors, one detective supervisor, seven full-time officers, two-ish part-time officers, and one administrative assistant. You just saw my staffing level, we're way understaffed. Twenty-thirty, we should be at approximately twenty full-time officers, but I won't hold my breath. Fire department, one chief, four full-time firefighter EMS positions, and approximately thirty part-time volunteer firefighters, if I read the report correctly. And again, the twenty-three projection to them, they also be up twenty. That is the rendering, such that it is, goes up, and you can see the bump out on the side where the Sally Court addition is going to be. I couldn't get the lines to go through, there should be lines for the bay right there. The Sally Court gets some work. Again, this is all available.
This is in your report, the renderings aren't, so maybe when you're done, go back to the renderings, leave that up, we'll look at that.
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
And again, these are in the report as well, and we can get the renderings out electronically.
Yes.
Plan spatial needs, additional office space for both of us, locker room changing areas with bathrooms and showers so that we're not showering and walking across the locker rooms because that has potential problems. Bunking area, new evidence, which is huge, file storage, reconfigured Sally Court. Again, I'm going to beat on this because this is really my pet beat right now. I cannot secure a full-size vehicle if I have a crime involving a full-size vehicle. Can't do it, I don't physically have the space to do it. And I just learned that the county impound lot does not have cameras, which really thrilled me when I found that out. So reconfigured Sally Court is big. An armory, juvenile space, true juvenile space, training room, a shared training room with the potential for community use, built with a public emergency use in mind, i.e. so that if we have a natural disaster or something where we need to house folks, we can do that. Financial, we're looking to bond it. We obviously will continue to seek alternative funding sources such that we can. We're always looking for grants and whatnot, we'll continue looking. Conclusion, because I like to keep it brief, foundation for this renovation was laid out in twenty eighteen. That time, the prior PD renovation was clearly stated that was only a band-aid. That was our words and the board's words back then. As community grows, so too do our needs to increase staff, community operational needs. Public Safety Building as built in nineteen ninety-nine has not increased its usable space, and public safety staff hopes to work with the VOS citizenry at large to reverse solution to our expanded operational needs. So you want to go back to the renderings?
Yeah, just leave that up on the screen, yeah. Whoever likes to look at pictures, you know?
Everybody likes.
Yeah, everyone likes pictures.
So that bump out that you see is that Sally Court addition that we were talking about. We built that large enough, A, to meet my requirement of being able to secure a full-size vehicle. We also built it with EMS in mind so that if we have a prisoner that is unruly, we can actually bring an ambulance into that Sally Court, close the bay door so that we're not risking a prisoner at large if something bad happens. Right now, the ambulance comes over, they back up, we open the door, they come in, and they're in the booking room without actually having to secure an ambulance if we have to go out to them.
And that's the only footprint change.
Correct.
And then you can see the windows, the six windows above the bays, that's where the square footage change is happening, lifting the roof up. And so really, the building won't look a lot different, but a lot of changes will be looking towards the future.
And this is projected to suffice for the next twenty years.
Yeah, that's what, that was the plan.
So you have two different plans that are in our book. Do either of them project out, you know, longer?
No, Plan A and Plan B, the difference is the difference in height in which they go up. The square footage difference is listed on the third page inside that graph in the really tiny writing. We all, y'all as a board, have to determine if that increase in square footage was worth a pretty substantial chunk of cost. We kind of went with Plan A because that seemed to be the best bet. No, it really doesn't gain us any operational, it's more space, obviously, but as far as the distance, about two decades.
There's about a million dollars, or about a third of a million dollars.
Yeah.
I saw that includes fire suppression, does the current building have fire suppression?
No. The monstrosity of seven.
So, yeah, throughout the building?
Yes.
Chief Walker, do you have any addition that you want to add to this?
No, I think Chief Joy and Chief Brooks did a lot of work on this to get to the spot where we needed to be. We stand, I stand in solid support that, having been around for forty years and worked when we were all three in separate buildings and have the last twenty-two years been able to work together as a group, I find that there are so many advantages for us being together as opposed to finding a piece of property, moving somebody somewhere else. It's important to understand that in order for this progress process to work, that the area over the apparatus space has a truss roof right now because the building committee at the time didn't want poles in the bay apparatus space. But I saw that as a giant waste of space up there, and so to me, it made the most sense to go off, stay on the same footprint, stay on the same, the property, take the roof off and build a second story on there, and then set the roof back on, take the trusses out. What that's going to involve in talking to the engineers preliminarily that it's probably about a five-month window in which then the apparatus space won't be available to us. So what that's going to need is work with the highway department in which we would temporarily relocate the fire apparatus over to the highway garage for the summer months inside there, maintenance building, whole back. And it was important for me to make sure that it's bad enough that we're kind of taking their space away from them, that we made sure we didn't do that during the inclement weather. So the engineers were comfortable that you could get a target date of early April, mid-April, or whatever, get started on that, and before it got cold and winter weather came in, the apparatus, it would be sufficiently sealed up that we could be back on the pump back into that, into the space, even though there's still technically be work going on upstairs. I think that, you know, the building served us well for the last twenty-two years. Where, the other thing is, we're due to, within the next few years, to put a roof on it, but we should have done it before now. So, again, what kind of makes, in my mind, what makes sense is to, if this project moves forward, then we're going to save the cost of the roof as opposed to having to roof the place and then put the project, move the project a few years down the road and then have to take good shingles and stuff off, some boy, and start over again, so.
Thank you. Any questions about the project, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. What effect does it have to the air with the air conditioning?
So part of the reason why we need to. So part of the reason why we need to move into the highway department garage is that the ambulances have to stay into a relatively climate-controlled area.
What about the drivers, the participants, the EMS personnel?
So.
What I'm getting at, so, so like, where the phone is.
Yep.
Versus where the vehicle's going to be kept. Is that particular person going to be part of the EMS that goes out?
So, so we're, we don't necessarily depend on the phones and stuff. We're dispatched, so, so we, we have UNEA's dispatch monitors and answers and stuff for us twenty-five days, seven days a week. So the, the plan would be is that as part of this process, we would probably move a temporary building over next to the highway garage in which it would, for lack of a better way of calling it, would be office space and a bunk space for the crews to, so they, they be on site with the ambulance.
Thank you. And fire. Good. Does that also affect lease?
I don't believe it's going to affect us nearly as much because the bulk of the work is going to be done over there. We've survived one renovation and we lived in the garage. We lived everywhere inside the PD except where they were working. We'll just be doing it again, that's all. I don't remember my office to the outside if you manage this time.
Be a fun winter.
Any other question?
I like the cold.
Is being going to put it in an elevator?
Oh, yeah. Do you think?
Thank you. I left, I left it recorded. Thing that we talked about the renovation and the others is that we're going to be able to accommodate both male and female with the staff locker space and the variable. Is that going to be addressed with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Look at the concept plans and actually shows.
It's tiny, but it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, just go there with that.
It's a beender, it's a beender.
You going to sprinkle a little?
Sure will have to be.
Last comment is, it's time for a new bit PD note. That's my last comment on this.
Do you know why it's?
It's a week.
Because it's a week.
I think it's due in part to flashing, and I think entirely it's due to the whole group. We had the issue when it was there. It stopped for, what, a decade-ish? And now it's back.
And then design issues that things.
Probably they can reflash the areas around those windows would be my suggestion, but I'm certainly not a builder.
The whole roof, the, even though the PD side of the roof isn't changing, the whole roof would be re-shingle because it's, it's due, and it has to be the other side, but.
Chief Walker can correct me because I, I don't think I'm speaking out of term, but last year or the year before, they started chasing rot down across the faceboard from his side of the building towards mine, and they stopped chasing because they weren't finding the end to it. So my guess is when shingles come up on that side, my side of the building, for lack of a better term, from the office over, it's going to be a nightmare.
That building was built, there was a lot of discussion.
There surely was about which way things were supposed to be facing.
That's pretty cold. That's the cold side of the building right there, so in the wintertime, it's a challenge for us to keep the ice away. You know, you get the snow up in it, and the sun comes over, starts to melt some of it, and it freezes, and it creates ice fans. We're always chasing the summer, but we don't necessarily always.
I just press the gas.
You guys thought about heat trace on that part of it?
Yes.
Heat trace is the, the electrical line that heats up, not what you're saying.
Yes.
There's, I tried some up there, but no doubt.
That was something that the facilities folks were looking into. I won't open that can of worms.
Okay, that's true.
Who?
Yes.
Who? Give a name and a number.
I don't need more, right?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions about the project?
No, mine is a question.
Who's got?
It was a question.
Okay. Then perhaps we all listen to the ABC's comments first. Steve, would you, you could comment, please?
Somebody plug it in now.
I mean, he might have questions you want to ask. You might want to stay closed, George.
I'm going to stay closed, so I'm going to.
Oh, okay. You can just shut that down or tick it.
Just close it.
Yeah.
Just close it?
Yeah.
Sure?
Yeah.
Well, don't just close it.
That's what she said.
Mr. Summers, please.
Yes, thank you. First off, I wanted to thank Chief Joy and Chief Brooks for preparing the budget so thoroughly. It's early in the process. We are very pleased with the level of detail. And also, the ABC, I can speak to them, we're very happy to see the conservative approach that the department has taken in spite of the needs that do for staffing especially that, that are really well justified. We spent some time with them going into how we were going to cope with keeping the staffing levels where they were. And we got a really very good response that he's comfortable with that. We're accepting of that from the ABC's perspective because we feel that staffing increases are extremely important to, to achieve. And this may not be the right time to do it, so we're very happy to see that. So with the overall budget as it's presented, I think we're very comfortable that it was very well put together. And at this point, don't see any given the revenue projections that we have on the table right now that there anything would challenge in the operating budget itself. We're not at a point of making any judgment on either warrant article because that's later in the process when we get to recommendations, regulate to those. But I would like to request that we get some little additional information as we go forward, especially given the economic situation and that all our residents are facing with their kind of reluctance to approve bond issues and major things such as the renovation to the safety building. And to go back to twenty eighteen, when the renovations were first started in the building on the police side, there was very good justification put together that said, we really need, and we have some real concerns that need to be addressed and priorities. I would like to ask the board to request the department to go back and review that. It would be a good template to use for communications because I think this, if we go forward with this proposal, we'll need a very good communications and strategy to show that this is the necessary thing you need to do. And now is the time to do it in spite of the economy. And so we'd like to get that reviewed, of course, more view of fleshing out what the needs are because I think they were pretty well explained. It's just a matter of perhaps repackaging somewhat as part of the new communications package. I'd also like to request that we look at the town administrator and put together a potential impact on tax rates year by year, given the best and probably the most conservative approach in terms of maximum bond issue we might need, so that we can look year by year and as part of the communications package. And for ourselves to look at whether we want to go forward with this, but definitely if we do go forward, we need to communicate exactly what the impact would be to the residents to get there.
You talking about future? Future projections, okay.
Kind of why I wanted to discuss that as per.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
I think helps in the, either Chief Joy or Mr. Summers.
I would just want, if I may, sorry.
Please.
In the past, we've had these discussions about personnel, both type equipments, how we want. If you remember in the past, we had, you were having one individual work a shift, place department work, what they have and everything else. And I just want to caution everybody is that we need, we need to ensure that the people in town are going to be adequately taken care of as far as protection and what have you. But also the fact is that we, we voters have to realize that we need to have these personnel onboard and not just run on, well, we can do this, we, we really got to put our foot there, you know? Really have. We've had a positive, and I got to be careful how I choose my words, but for the police, for the fire department, with the EMS, we voted to have, keep the second ambulance because it might be a need for. Well, might be a need, there was a need. So I feel the same way when it comes time for our personnel here, and I agree with the ABC that we should really look at putting another person on. That's my opinion. Thank you.
I would agree that if, that as we get toward the end of the process, if there is adequate funding that we can find through revenue projections or whatever, that would be an appropriate thing to, to include.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we are, we are putting up a lot of homes for sale. We're putting up buildings for rental lease, I don't know what the problem, you know? And, and the money's going to be coming in for some of these people when they do it, so that might change some of the projections. And I don't know if those were used in figuring projections because I understand that they're not a positive. So we're.
I agree, and, and as we get further along in the process, we'll get additional revenue projections that may help us, give us more flexibility or not. We'll see where they go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, do you have a question?
No. Yes, for Chief Joy. Thank you, that was a very, it's a very presentation. You, you made an obvious comment about if you could find a point five at T, you would grab them. So was that in lieu of one of your others, point fives, or just where would that?
No, in the past, the prior board, not you folks, made it clear that if part-timers came along, I should grab it. When I say if I find the right part-timer, I'll grab them, that to me is not, and I'm very frank, I was approached by a full-time officer that was trying to go in very well, who made inroads about part-time work. That individual was essentially looking to pick up details and keep his certification. Lovely guy. That's not what I need. Operationally, it's not George Joy liking another officer. Operationally, I need somebody that's going to work shifts for me. That's what I need from a part-time. So if I can find another, and I'm just going to throw him out there, if I can find another Josh Turner, another individual that has a very good full-time job, that's been doing part-time police work for a significant amount of time, that knows his way, I'm going to grab that guy. We anticipated a pretty extensive field training from that individual because he only works one day a week. As it was, he worked eight weeks, seven, eight-ish weeks, and both my field training officers that have him said, cut. He knows his job, he needs to learn geography while you learn geography by driving around, that's how he can learn. So we cut Officer Turner loose, he's done a fantastic job.
But you would have enough, you could find enough light and tape or?
I believe so, and the TA and I talked about this. I'm going to use the phrase, Connor, you're going to get mad, I have Sandy Bucks. Officer Saroski's not going to be returning until March, so I'm going to have some leeway in my full-time line. Again, I wouldn't use that to go buy a cruiser, but if I have the opportunity to find another Officer Turner and I have to dip into my full-time lineup, I'll come in front of you folks again, certainly. That's where I can find that, and then we can readdress it down the road. I agree fully with Select Board member Bailey in the chair here. We need a full-time guy. This isn't the year for it. And I get that, and it's hard for me to swallow that, we have a plan. But I also understand what the taxpayers are going through townwide, and now's not the time for me to come to you folks. There are other departments that share my house that have a bigger need than I do. That's great. It's their time to deal with that because I want those guys on at night when my folks need them, and I want those guys there when something bad happens. I also realize that we need to focus on retention, and y'all have a decision to make tonight. I don't want to be pitting retention standards with an increase in my budget for a full-time personnel. I'd rather take care of the people that I have currently. Work on getting my Officer Saroski back. Once I get Officer Saroski back, I can give you all a good indicator of where we're at schedule-wise. I haven't had a chance to work in full capacity yet. Do I know I need more people? Yes, I do, we know that, the statistics are there. But I haven't yet had a chance to work through full staff capacity, and I won't until Officer Saroski gets back. That'll let me know where my weaknesses are, so I can come to you and say, yes, two, no, three, and we can handle it a little bit at a time, but this year is not the year for that.
I think you've also pointed out too that these part-time people actually save us money in the long run because we don't have to pay overtime. Get issues covered, so finding, finding another part-time officer.
It just needs to be the right guy.
Right.
We've got the right person. Excuse me.
And Mr. Chair, to that point, the part-time and per diem in the public sector is a little bit different. I mean, we just call the positions part-time positions, but they're not regular part-time positions. That's an important distinction. So we sold this to the board and the position that Josh Turner is in now, it's really a per diem position, as needed, on-call as needed. Right now, he's working regular shifts because we have, you know, a full-time officer that's deployed and, but the, the idea is not to use these per diem or part-time positions to fill regular shifts and add to the total amount of shift coverage, only to fill the shift coverage which we would have with our full-time staff. And, and that's really the difference between like an Officer Scott Young who works and is scheduled thirty hours a week and an Officer Josh Turner who, right now, I think he has a schedule, but is, is really per diem just shift coverage. He's covering somebody else's shift, whereas Scott Young is in the shift rotation. And that's why the Select Board at the time had given the police department the authority to bring on multiple per diem officers to have in the scheduling rotation, not to have their own shifts that they work, not to add to the total coverage, but only to backfill. And like the chairman mentioned, with the goal to, to, you know, save us money, but also to the chief's point for their, on the retention side, what I've heard from the officers at the bargaining table and otherwise, is they don't, they can't work all the shifts that are available, even at overtime rates, because they're getting, you know, they're burnt out, it's a lot when you have vacancies. And so to be able to, to hit it from multiple sides with a per diem type position, which we call part-time, and that's why I like the chief's point five-ish, because, you know, it's not an F D.
I don't like to speak operationally, and the ABC asked this, and I'm going to, I'm going to duck it a little bit, but I am going to bring Officer Turner up as a point. Officer Turner's scheduled for his full-time job, is amicable for using him on Mondays specifically. Mondays for me as chief are garbage. I'm catching up on arrests from the weekends, we have people locked up. Today, I walked into a violation protective order, was locked up, we're going to be arraigned at eleven o'clock. It's not going to deal with Gerrstein's complaints and everything else, getting those to the court. Monday's also payroll day. It happens on Monday right now that it's myself and Officer Libby. So by having Officer Turner availability on Monday makes my life a lot easier because I can bring Josh in and have him work with Officer, including Officer Libby, and have that coverage on Mondays. Otherwise, I'd be running solo unit with me as a backup. So Officer Turner fits that well. That's happenstance, it was luck, basically. Now, again, when I get Officer Saroski back, and I get another full-time guy, I don't have problems on Monday anymore in theory, and then I can bounce Officer Turner around to where I can use him and where he's better used. So right now, he's best utilized right where his availability is.
With all of this, should we consider moving some of the ish people back into per diem? Instead of leaving one of the part-time? It's just, it's just a question of thought, the way things are going.
I think they're, the point I tried to make at the beginning, we call them all part-time, they're all paid out of the part-time wages line.
I understand that.
But the, the classification, the public sector on the part-time is, is the most efficient known in culture.
Understand that too, thank you.
But in practice, there's seldom.
That's nice. Yep.
And Mr. Chair, if I might, just on the bond issue. So I think it's important for the Select Board to make some sort of a decision tonight about moving forward with the public safety building renovation expansion as proposed. So as you heard from both Chief Joy and Chief Walker, they're ready to open the floodgates and do all the work necessary to bring this bond issue to the warrant in March. But the, the juncture that we're at now, they've spent a lot of time, worked with CMA with the feasibility study, and we, we need some indication from the Select Board, one of two things. Either the green light, yes, move forward, we have the appetite to put this three, three-and-a-half million dollar bond issue on the warrant for twenty twenty-three, or these are the specific pieces of additional information that we feel like we need as a board to make an informed decision. Obviously, the decision doesn't have to be made tonight, we meet next week, we meet in early November. But the, it's important that we have that decision at some point soon. And so if you feel like you're ready for that tonight, so be it. If you feel like you need more information, please discuss that. Share that with all of us so we can get to work addressing those items.
But what members know, I can go either way, but he will wait, you know, like I said. We have to ensure who we're taking care of.
All right. I think we agree on that. We talked about the warrant. We, you were talking about a $7,000 warrant.
We did not. I can certainly speak to that if you'd like.
I'm going to go that way myself because we're going to have to decide how we shuffle our, our warrant articles. All the warrant articles.
I think we should wait because at the same time, we're going to make the consideration. Wait, it sounds like now there's nobody else spoke with favor what I just discussed. So I think we should just, that would be a warrant out. We should do it at that time. So we did go before the public can ask.
Yeah.
Christmas is this is here.
We're talking two, two different warrant articles here.
Yeah. Well, that's why I said, wait, wait till another time. Then we can do it both then. We get a better understanding after we have input from the other departments.
I think we've gone through all those things we did. We want to talk about, are we ready? Is everyone ready to make a decision on this new, new building? Or are there specific questions that we want answered before we go forward?
I think it'd be helpful to know from you, Connor, to project what it does for the tax rate. Actually, we're looking at money.
I think it's a fair estimate, just to, you know, spread out the repayment to the longest possible terms. So on Thursday, Wednesday, no, tomorrow, no, Wednesday, sorry, it doesn't really matter. I have a meeting with our bond counsel from Devon Millamette, who works closely with the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank. And I can start to get projections for what would be the July 2023 sale. They'll, they can provide us, you know, bond schedule. And that will be, you know, if I had to guess right now, it's, you know, I'd give them a 30, a $3.5 million bond with a 20-year repayment schedule. And, you know, they would anticipate the interest rate, which is going to be, is going to be a moving target between now and then. And so what that does is that gives a repayment, repayment schedule. And there's options. The, the most favorable municipal option is basically a declining, like in, in, similar to a typical home mortgage, where you're, you're making almost the same payment every year, but the amount you're paying towards principal increases towards the end of the term. So that's the most common because budgetary purposes, you're paying, you're budgeting the same amount each year. So that's probably what I would ask for. And it will tell us how much our repayment over 20 years would be. And the tax, the anticipated tax rate impact would be a factor of, you know, however much that is over our $1.4 billion valuation. And to Chair Saunders' point about future tax rate impact. So once we, once we budget, so typically what will happen is the first year we'll just make an interest payment. And then the next year after that is the first year we'd have a full payment. So once that full payment is in the budget, that's going to be in the budget every single year. So you only feel the impact, the, the spike in the tax rate once. Now the tax rate's up here, that's your, essentially your new baseline until the bond, you know, falls off. So yes, we can absolutely have that information. And, you know, it's, it's still, what do I say? I mean, it's, it will still be a moving target because it's determined most specifically based on interest rates, which are ever increasing. So I don't know that you'll have a super clear picture of that by the time that you need to make a decision to put it on the warrant. Maybe.
That's helpful to know that.
Just summarizable.
So maybe we'll have to wait.
We'll see what information is available for next Monday and try to make a decision.
Fair. Very good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, consent agendas. Do you want to have any issues with the consent agendas?
I have proposed for your consideration adding the appointments that are up for a vote to the consent agenda. That would be both for Paul Panish, one for the Energy Committee, one for the Conservation Commission. So second reading on those.
Motion for that.
Yeah.
I would that we add those to the consent agenda, the two appointments.
Second.
Second.
Favor. All right. We got time. Now, now let's address the consent. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I have one, I have one other issue for the effort we received there. Requested we hold a non-public discussion. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's address the consent agenda. All those in favor of the consent agenda as a model? Out there. All right, moving on. There, back. Staff report.
Yes, thank you. This is our second meeting in October, but still worth mentioning, although he was mentioned many times tonight. Sam Saroski was hired in the month of October three years ago. And we look forward to having him back. We appreciate his service overseas. Next item, the 2022 land sale auction for the select board. This has been a topic of discussion over many months, so none of this is a surprise. But for the community's benefit, we have the 2022 land sale auction scheduled for November 5th at the Early Childhood Learning Center. The auctioneer, you will have seen signs out at each one of these properties. They're like a red bar with white, then I think some green or blue. But if you see one of those signs in front of a property, that's going to be auctioned off on November 5th. The auctioneer's website, which I have linked in the Town Administrator Report, has anything and everything you could ever want to know about these properties. A lot of credit is due to the municipal office administrator for collating all of the backup information. So it's really an interesting thing, the whole selling of tax-dated properties because it's an incredibly complex process that spans many years. And how, you know, how municipalities typically sell these properties is they put them up for sale. People buy them. Sometimes they do their due diligence, come in, look at the records, thumb through everything. When they come in to look at records, the tax collector usually give them a stack of folders and say, hey, you know, find what you're looking for. In Barrington, we do it in a much more professional way, in my opinion. So Tiffany, working with the tax office, collects all of the pertinent records for each one of these properties. The liens, the deed, all of the old records, and some of these go back many dozens of years. And makes those all available upfront. They're actually linked on the auctioneer's website. And that's one thing that we can do to, in order to secure highest and best value for these lots. We make them as, as marketable and sellable as possible. And it's a lot of work from Tiffany, but it's, it's time well spent. It worked really well for the last auction. I suspect it will work very well for this auction. So credit where credit's due when you see all that backup information. Credit to Tiffany on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, good to hear, Tiffany.
So questions about the auction? Okay, moving on, New Town Hall Open House. So an esteemed committee of staff has been meeting to organize the open house. I included in, in your packet the flyer as it exists for the open house on October 27th from 3:00 to 7:00. A couple of the notable additions to the timeline. At 6:00, the local American Legion post will be performing a flag dedication ceremony outside. The local American Legion post has also donated a POW, MIA, and American flag. We already have the, the American flag outside. We're actually use the two flags they're donating at the POW, MIA Chair of Honor, which will be dedicating at 6:30. And that will be the chapter of Rolling Thunder that will be dedicating that Chair of Honor. We have a chair that was donated from, that was restored by a World War II veteran and donated for the purpose. And so the 6:00 ceremony, 6:30 ceremony, there'll be raffle prizes, light refreshments, and a variety of fun facts that folks can peruse during their self-guided tours. And certainly, hopefully, the select board will be here for most of that to help answer questions of the community and shepherd community members through the building. Questions about the open house? Fantastic. Okay.
Thanks for the committee.
Yes. Absolutely. So town facilities and custodial services. So we've talked about this a couple of times. We've talked about the custodial services and the gaps we have. We've talked about the facilities services that we did receive and we no longer receive. For the entire board and the community, not for discussion or any decision that needs to be made right now, but just the background and information as it exists. We, the town and the school has always worked collaboratively to save taxpayers money. And we will continue to do that at any opportunity that it, that presents itself. Dating back to 2005, the town had a memorandum of agreement for the services of facility manager. That said, the school hires a facility manager and the town, he's the, that individual, that position is the facility manager for the town also. In 2019, the individual that was in that position turned over. And the select board started the initiative to enter into a more robust intermunicipal agreement with the school, essentially to codify all of the existing ways that the school and the town collaborate with facility use and winter maintenance, salt, sand, the fuel. So I included a copy in your packet of the intermunicipal agreement that was adopted by the select board back in late 2019. And, you know, if you thumb through it, it really highlights a lot of the really positive ways that the town and the school cooperate. And for any other, you know, for no other reason other than to promote our cooperation in the community, the agreement's a really good idea. At the time, the select board also felt it was important to make sure that it was part of a formal agreement so there wasn't any improper mixing of, of funds or services. I think that's less of a risk simply because we're all the same pocketbook. But having a good agreement is, is really important. Ultimately, the select board adopted that agreement and, and the school board decided to take no action. After that, the, what was identified in this agreement was actually expanded because the SAU needed more money for custodial staff. I think they wanted to transition a position from part-time to full-time. So we entered a custodial services contract with the school. And I included a copy of that also. Basically, that said that, you know, the town is going to contract for services, have a pool of custodians at the school so that if there's a vacation or turnover, whatever the situation may be, there's a pool of people to drop them. Because the tough part about having one or two custodians is when you don't have that custodian, you have the police chief and the fire chief emptying the trash and mopping the floors after hours because the, the one custodian that we have is on vacation, which just happened for two weeks. And so it was a really good deal. The school canceled that contract. They've transitioned to contracting services themselves. They have a few custodians. We were able to hire one of the retired school custodians, which solves part of the problem, but it doesn't solve the backfilling problem. And it's really not a sustainable model. So on the custodial side, we continue to have holes. The facility, not having facility support is a much more challenging problem to, to encounter. And it, you know, worked really well with the school because I don't think that the town has the need for a, you know, a full-time facility manager dedicated just to the town facilities. But we need somebody in, in that position, an individual in that position. So we're focusing on our short-term needs right now. Some staff members, you know, namely Chief Walker, have stepped up to help with some of the immediate things like ordering and coordinating some of the individual custodians. But we're exploring options for the medium to long-term solution to, to both of these problems. Select person, Vice Chair Bailey, has offered to share his expertise, which is, which is much appreciated. And so you will hear more about this. And we'll continue to, to, you know, figure out what's going to be best for the town and best for the pocketbook of taxpayers. But it's a, it's a problem that we can't ignore. And I want to make sure, you know, it's record with the board and the community where we are now. Happy to answer questions about that now. Or if you have any ideas, come see me anytime. As, as great as possible. Okay.
Any questions about that?
The only addition I have is a request for signature for the private road agreement. That was just. Nope, that is electronic.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Why do we keep getting the documents back that you signed? Why can't we just sign it and not have them sent back to us again? No, not completed when, 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 let's say you sign it and you send it off. Then I sign it, send it off, and then I get in the mail, shows you and I signed. I'm only picking on it just, I don't think I need it. Once I sign it, it goes away. I don't think I should get it back again.
Come see us. I think.
We'll set up a filter.
Yeah, maybe we can set up.
See, I don't know what it costs.
Document signing filter and go to the document site completely.
Once is enough.
Okay, no.
All right, moving on. All business. The wage study. I think we have the, I guess this is the final report.
This is the final report?
So what do we have for questions? I think we've discussed this some line. Are there any specifics?
I'd like to ask what Steve thinks. We can see. Hi, Steve. Copy that.
The budget committee has had the financial impact since the beginning of the process. Yes.
Yes, we have. And the ABC concurs that these findings in the study are, are very well done in comparative, and it's very important for the retention of employees to have something that's competitive in the marketplace. I think we do support this to be included. Budget as it was presented to us includes funding in the incident fund today that would cover it. And we've always wanted and asked the board to put the wage issues early in, in the process so that we would be able to look at each department budget as we went on. As we got toward the close of the process, we weren't waiting for some decision on salaries that would blow the whole budget away. So at this point, we do support it based on all the assumptions we've seen. And we would encourage the board to approve this and let us include it in the budget at this time, recognizing that as we get down to the end, we may have to reconsider it.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. Again, I think we've discussed this some line, but are there any other question? Rock or?
Question. Explain how the incident fund plays into this part of it. Whereas it seems like in 2023, in April, after developers approved the budget and these go to effect, how's the incident fund get tapped or be?
Yeah, it's a great question. For me, the incident fund was just a tool to make sure that the money was in the initial budget presentation in order to fund what the recommendations were. So that it wasn't, you know, when the select board is sitting here, after you just heard an initial budget presentation, the very next meeting, oh, we have to add $60,000 to the budget. So I just plugged $60,000 in as a placeholder in the incident fund. If the select board decides tonight that the recommendations are approved, the first thing I'll be doing tomorrow is distributing the actual wage increases throughout each department and generating updated wage and benefit pages for each department budget. So like if you flip to police in your budget binder, the first page is the budget as a whole. And then the next page, and they look like this, is the wage and benefit for the department. It lists each individual employee, how many hours they're scheduled, what their wage rate is for the first part of the year and the last part of the year. So this will be updated to reflect those recommendations on an employee-by-employee basis. So once that's done, the $60,000 will be out of the incident fund. It'll all be distributed throughout the budget and we won't have to talk about the incident fund about it again. That kind of makes sense? Doesn't make sense.
So this isn't going to take effect on this?
So this isn't going to take effect on this date?
Right. Yeah, so the town, the town policy on wage increases historically has been to have wage increases all happen at once and the first pay period in April. So the benefit of that on the, on the municipal side is our funding depends on a positive vote at town meeting. So we go through this process and say that we propose an $8.2 million budget for the voters to support. They could say no. If they say no, because we're an SP2 community, we end up with a default budget. That default budget is based largely on what our budget was for this year. And so that might not include enough money to provide wage increases as, as we discuss right now. And so waiting until the budget passes in March is an important step to make sure that the funding is available. So even in here, you know, as the motion's written, necessary to implement the recommendations, April 2023, upon passage of the 2023 budget. So it's all conditioned on passage of the budget, and that's what happens in April. And so the budget that's presented to voters, if the select board, you know, supports these recommendations, will show the budget increases in each individual line, not the incident. More clear?
Okay. Then we'll entertain a motion.
And the second half of this motion is about the police union. So we can't just make changes to the, to any negotiated aspect of a union contract. And so what this motion is written would authorize us to do is to send a request to the union, the police union, to open negotiations. And if they're interested in that, which I suspect that they might be, then the, the police part of this will be a collective bargaining agreement on the warrant in 2023. And so that, that's the second piece of, of this process. We felt it was important to have the select board make a decision on the wage study recommendations before starting that process.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the recommendations of the 2022 wage study include the funding necessarily to include the recommendations in April of 2023 upon passage of the 2023 budget, further to offer opening of contract going to the PBA Local 240, or quote the police union, in order to incorporate the proposed changes in the collective bargaining warrant.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Appreciate that support.
You know, we really have a great team. It's a great town, we really do. It's amazing to see how it works. And there was another department needs help, another department was opening up. It's just a great group of people. That's all I have been really.
Petition special town meeting. I think, again, board has discussed this some line. Reiterating, Jim, there's petition calling for a special town meeting. The meeting was scheduled in accordance with the RSA 39, column three. There is, we had the deliberative session on the 20th of August. The proposed warrant article was modified by a vote of that body. We agreed to see if the town will vote to encourage the select board to continue employment following the guidance of Peter Royce and their current positions with the town of Barrington and to recognize the many contributions that you have made to the town throughout their tenure. They're also scheduled as in accordance with the appropriate RSA for the ballot session, the second part of the special town meeting, maybe tomorrow, Tuesday, 18th of October. And the voting will take place in this building at that point. There is a, town has a website that shares details to include frequently asked questions, including the county attorney and the attorney general for review of the complaints. I think the only thing we need to be is to do is ensure that we're all, that we have representation here. So I've sort of for, for the entire time. I sent out a schedule, I think, coming at you in school.
Yeah, I'll delay that.
I'll delay that. Okay.
It's about 10, 10 to 12 there.
If you want, 5:30 later.
So that gives you the next one, the third one, I take the fourth one.
And. What's the 12? Could you take that, that 12:30 to 2:00 or something?
I can take that, I can take you.
Would you do that?
12:30, 12:30, what?
To. To 3:00. No, I'll take.
10, sure, I can do that.
Okay.
So I know what we discussed before, because they're aware.
Yeah. My wife has an appointment, but I need to go to.
I was a little bird. As we used to say.
Exactly. Yeah. So we're good.
Do we all need to come back?
I think we need three people here. I suppose, I guess, have been counted from the municipal, then we have to certify that. I'll be here for that.
You have to sign, you have to sign the slip to seal the ballots, but I can.
I had to call some.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and Rob, you're going to be here. One of you, one or all of you can show up or.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
That's good. My, earlier than eight, the voting stops at seven. It'll be a lot quicker than the normal election just because there's the one article. So there's not as much to tabulate. I mean, it's not going to be 7 o'clock on the dot, but probably 7:30 to be safe.
All right. Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Are you good? New business, I don't think they have any new business at this point. Select board reports some concerns.
Yes, we had many items at the last planning board. We had made two site visits with the conservation commission on the Tibido subdivision on Route 9. And that, after that report, they actually withdrew it for some more design work. But one of the issues is the road is significantly in the wetland buffer zone. We also had a site visit on Route 4 with a housing asphalt business, and there are concerns there about the wetland buffer as well. There was a permit that was denied on Fiddy Lane because of construction, proposed construction in the wetland buffer. We did approve some things, a three-lot subdivision on Street 1 Road, a permit for outdoor events, like Renaissance and Arms, like fairs and concerts and things. And a business at that commercial zoning district, we had 110, I think, last circle, a business for storage and recycling and used cooking. I think what would be the highest interest to the select board, based on our previous discussion that Jim, you had brought up about preserving the open spaces in the land behind Caleb's. So there was a design discussion with a group that owns around 12 acres. So it's behind Aroma Jones, it doesn't butt on 125. But they are proposing at this point, two three-story buildings. One will be elderly housing and one will be assisted living, they'll have a medical office and a daycare center. And there will be. Decide what they would like to do. So we had an interesting discussion about that.
Child daycare. Good job, Danny.
Child, child daycare, child daycare. But there was one quote, I guess, when Mrs. Caleb sold this property, she expressed her desire for this land to be used for the needs of the elderly in Barrington so that they could stay close to family members still in residence and not have to travel to neighboring towns. So the proposed concept design was trying to actually meet her wishes. Well, it passes around in some artistry mission, architecture profession. Of course, that may change a day.
And Mr. Chair, while that's going around, if I may, the, one of the topics of conversation at the planning board was the open space that's required by our zoning ordinance with a development like this. It's anywhere between 15 and 25%. And on the, on the rendering, I think they have pickleball.
They, I think it might be like tennis courts and a band stand and stuff. But of course, that's just there as place ones.
Right. And so that, the, that would be the responsibility of the town to build that infrastructure. They would make the land available, be the responsibility of the town. And there's been talks in the past about how that's sometimes an uphill battle to, to appropriate the funds, to make improvements like that. But there's a, there's a provision in municipal finance that was adopted in New Hampshire. It's called a TIF, TIF District Tax Increment Financing. It started in California, which is probably the worst part about it. But it's a, it's a financial tool to do the types of things that, that we would be talking about here. And big picture, what it does is it says that the municipality can take, that, if it's adopted and brought about in the right way, can take the tax revenue that's generated from a commercial development project like this, the difference between that tax revenue and what the tax revenue is now, which the tax revenue now is next to nothing because it's in current use. But take that tax revenue difference and invest that tax revenue in the supporting infrastructure. And it used to be that you had to invest that money in, in that specific region. They did away with that requirement. So it's possible that if, and this is a select board initiative. If the select board had an appetite, staff could go through the process and pull information together for a project like this to say, let's adopt a TIF district, make this a TIF project, and take the money, take that tax revenue for the first however many years. It wouldn't be that many years. This project would generate a lot of tax revenue and use that to fund the playground, the pickleballs, the expanded parking, you know, down next to Elfmade, whatever the situation may be. And that's a way that we can essentially use the dollar-for-dollar tax revenue of the development to improve the infrastructure. So it's kind of a unique, yeah, it's, it's a unique model to accomplish those types of things. It's most frequently used to expand like wastewater and water infrastructure, you know, some of those other big cost items. We don't have that problem, but there's nothing that would prevent us from using it to invest in recreational opportunities. So something to consider, and if the select board is interested, we can put together some more information, bring it back. For water. The biggest risk with a TIF district is if the project doesn't actually add value, which wouldn't be the case here, but you see that a lot with revitalizing historic districts where you have buildings and somebody comes in to rehab them. But you spend all of the TIF money upfront to expand the water or wastewater, whatever the situation may be. But then the project's a flop and doesn't add value, so there's no more tax revenue. So now the taxpayers are, are saddled with the added cost. Where it's virgin land and new development, it will add value, so.
It's, put those electric.
We have the charger?
Because that will take care of a lot of the wastewater, wastewater.
Sorry, but just an idea.
Anything else to say?
Good luck. No, thank you.
This past Thursday, the, the conservation commission did meet. However, I was at the Sacramento County Farm Bureau Annual Meeting, so I could not attend. But I've noted it authorized payment to the CMA engineers, which they had previously agreed to. So that, that study on Richardson Dam proceeds.
Funded from the conservation fund, $50,000, so. Yep, big targets.
Rec department. So. Fall festivities are happening on October 29th. They will have a trunk-or-treat, live music, bonfire, spooky walk, vendors and food trucks. So look out for that. Winter sports are open to registrations, and they're actually wrapping up the field leveling project that they had. And it looks great. I mean, I heard people taking drive-by and checking out, big things happening over there. They're definitely looking for two more garden boxes out of me that I have not thought about that I won't get around to. Christmas is coming, but other than that, everything's good at the rec.
Before I go, before I, yeah, I'm just going to ask, we set the time for trick-or-treat yet?
Yes, it's, it's not done annually. It's always on the 30th at.
What, five, five to seven?
Five to seven.
But yes, that isn't a decision the select board makes every year.
But that's, but the decision is going to be five to seven.
Let's change it.
Or so.
Five, five.
Yeah, five, five to seven on the 30th.
I'm in the street, I'm going to have some meetings. There's the library meeting, which is going to be tomorrow night. And I'm going to have to get with the chair of trustees and let her know that I have another commitment. I won't be able to make it. And then on Wednesday, we have the ZBA right now. It currently has one case before it, and so that's my report.
I think it's a continuance, should be a shortcut.
Good luck. Good luck. All right. ABC met last Tuesday, you have their report, lead report. The transfer station committee met today and basically are still trying to release some construction done there. At one point, we'll require the, taking no metals on Tuesday, I don't think it's this Tuesday, I think it's the next Tuesday. Aaron, if you're there, you can correct me. And still looking at how we work through single source. There's, have decent modifications for the MSW area to meet ocean standards. So the school board, I'm out on the 4th, nothing terribly important for us. I, for those who haven't heard, I guess, the lottery for Oyster River is open. I think they have something like 50 slots there. So I don't know why that's, I'll tell me again tomorrow. So we'll get that any tomorrow. Public comment. Again, reiterate, if you have a chance to make three minutes of comments to the board, not necessarily a conversation with the board, make your comments. We'll, here, but not necessarily, not necessarily going to answer your questions if you have questions. Anyone here would like to make comments? Have already, if you've already made comments, you're.
It's going to be new comments.
But one, one comment, one, one person, period. Thank you. Anyone else who's not, Mr. Walker?
While the chief comes up, if you're participating virtually, put your hand up now if you'd like to make a public comment. Chair will call on you when it's your turn.
So the 300th anniversary committee is pretty heavily involved with the rec. October 29th of October, where the ones that are wrapped together, spooky walks together. And whether permitting, we would like to have a bonfire. That reminded me, because that's town law, you have to be permission from the board selectmen to allow a permit to be issued on the property.
Objection, please.
I'd recommend advice from the fire chief.
Fire chief.
Before making that decision, yeah.
What does Smokey say?
If it's, if it's not conducive to whether they know that we will allow it, but in the interest of, and again, I apologize, I would have asked people on the agenda, but I still am on. So if you folks are remenable to it, I would just ask that you allow the document to face this side on the part of the town.
Any objections? All those in favor?
And it's going to be a really good spooky walk, so come on up. It's free.
Will it scare us?
Well, we'll have an ambulance on standby.
Any other public comment? Anything on mine?
I do not see any hands.
No hands.
If I, if I may, because it came up via email.
Taken over from somebody else?
Yeah. Saturday evenings, there's a young man in town off of Beauty Hill Road that has put together a very similar spooky walk to what he was talking about. This event has happened in the past, it was in a different location, it's gained media traction this year, so there are going to be some no parking signs put up. Those were put up by the police department. Officer Noah Young took some time on Saturday to do that, and we're going to have an officer out there just assisting whatever the folks need, just as a military service.
Now, if we can keep an eye out on Lee Road as well.
Yeah, are they down on that end, Jimmy? Okay, yeah, we definitely will. I didn't.
Did they come in from that end?
But shame on me for not.
It's not to ask, because like, hey, is everything?
Yeah, I guess, I think they guaranteed that's a GPS issue.
Oh, no, they knew that it was going to be pretty heavy.
So, yes, thank you. I wasn't aware that that had happened. We'll make sure that we, they'll check that too. I'll have Officer Young's, we'll check that out on Saturday. That's it. Easy.
I do here. Any other public comment? Jim, talk to you. Grant?
Ken Grant, 372 Parker Mountain Road. I think I have the only application in for a committee position, and I think that's.
Actually, there's been several.
Pardon?
There are actually several.
Tonight? Okay.
Not tonight. No, not tonight. No, you missed the deadline. You missed the deadline. We approved a number of people for the energy committee.
Missed the deadline for what?
Are you asking about the energy committee?
Yeah. There's no, there's no deadline on that. But the normal process is to submit the application. And what I don't understand, if there was a motion to go into public, non-public, I have nothing on my application that needs to have non-public. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
And I, the other comment, I guess, was that, I guess it's a committee that associates can participate in.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments?
I'd like to offer mine, but I guess you're not going to let me.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. Our rule is one, one session, I mean, one city.
Can you cite that in rule?
Yes, I did. I did earlier. I did earlier.
Is that like, you had something you'd just like to discuss in non-public?
Sir, sir, it was announced earlier that you have one opportunity to make comment.
If you can, you cite the RSA that says that.
There is no RSA, that is our rule.
Okay, we'll let my comment known in Barrington connections. Thank you.
Select Board President Bailey, did you have something you wanted to put in non-public for?
No, I'm perfectly, we'll have a discussion of that later.
Yeah, there's been one reason that Mr. Grant's application, we'll address that again in our second, second meeting, our next meeting. Next meeting is for the 24th of October. Ballot session of the special town meeting is tomorrow. Are there any other? Tim Grant?
Who's due here?
June second. On there.